Yeah, I like. I keeps. Do you want to hoggy? I keep skipping lunch and dinner. I know, I have a good idea, but I keep skipping lunch and dinner and I'm like.
Different how assignment sheets or if anybody wants.
But I'm like, I'm like, it catches up with you and then you're like. I get weird. You know, like not only hangry, but I start to. Like, yeah.
This is a really question. Do I need to stop for public comment if I'm on the agenda?
No, not necessarily. If you're going to comment, I guess we make the motion. No, there's public comment at the beginning of the meeting. But if she has something on the agenda and somebody asks her to come up. Sign up for public comment.
Good call.
Somebody called her up though, she could come up.
Ms. Emba, roll call, please.
Mr. Brown. Mr. Kuzik.
Present.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Gofredo.
Here.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hepner.
Here.
Ms. Sarinski.
Here.
All present except for Mr. Brown and Mr. Heckman.
Motion to approve the minutes of the October 5th, 2023 and October 11th budget meeting. Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Curiously, the floor. David Friedman. 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 Would you give your name? Address and sir, you have five minutes.
Okay, my name is David Friedman, 367 Gapview Lane, Mount Bethel, PA. I'm a supervisor in upper Mount Bethel Township, but I'm not here representing the board tonight. I'm just here to give you a brief statement about things going on in upper Mount Bethel Township. I thought counsel would like be appraised of the situation that has occurred up there. Northampton County is going to be have the opportunity to have the ninth largest building in the country up there. Recently, a conditional use was approved for a 1,508,000 square foot building. Like I said, it's going to be the ninth largest building in the United States. And no specific use was given for this building. It was mainly approved on a consolidation issue. They consolidated three buildings into one. And they never gave us the specific, the use of this is going to be, although there's a multi uses that can be in this building from the zoning. Manufacturer fabrication, assembly, repair, storage, warehouse, a greenhouse, dry cleaning, dyeing, laundry, sign printing, printing and engraving. But there was stipulation that our chairman had said that there will be no Amazon type building. So I have no idea what's going in. We have no idea what's going in. And we don't have any idea when it will be going in. So I just thought the council would like be appraised that they'll be having a ninth largest building in the United States in the county. And I'm willing to take any questions at this time if you have any. Nothing? Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Matt Frabel. State your name, where you're from, and you have five minutes, sir.
Okay. I'm Matt Frabel. I live in the township. I run a bed and breakfast. We were just nice pictorial in Pennsylvania Bed and Breakfast Magazine, two pages. All about our area, which is the area of where the Leninapi settlement was in. They had the settlement, all the Arrowheads and Hammerstones and all the goodies that we found. To make a long story short here, we had we had an interview on WFMZ. And they noticed when I was outside, they noticed the odor was so bad now. It's one of those things that they noticed it from from out of the blue. I didn't mention it. They just said, what is it? I said, well, you know what, and they explained to them what it is. It's actually the odor from the township, from the Salkin Township landfill. But what bothers me the most, I think, is the the bulldozers running on the top, which originally they were not supposed to do that. That was 20 years ago. The agreement was they're not to come over the mountain. And they did it anyway. The other thing is when you come down the hill towards the river, you can see that on the top, they're covered, they cut the forest away. And then they have a whole area that's all ground. They never planted trees or ground cover or something like that to make it look decent. It's just brown dirt. Now you know that's going to wash into the river. It's on top of the mountain. And that's very, it's not very strategic for forestry for. I love plants. I have about 300 different kinds of plants on the property. Because I love trees and I love landscaping. And it bothers me that something like that, they would just contaminate the river. And that's about it. I just they seem to, of course, they don't care. You know, they're out of state in Texas, so. But to me, it's just, I don't know, it's something that they have no conscience, so let's put it that way. Thanks for your time. I know you guys are busy. Thank you.
Is it Bob Blask? Blasko, I can hardly read you right. Mr. Blasko?
I can hardly read you.
And you asked me to? Would you state where you're from, Mr. Blasko, your name, address, and you have five minutes once you start, sir?
Bob Blasko, 2510 Reddington Road, Lower Salkin Township. Some of the concerns I have, well, when they came around this last election at Lower Salkin Township, looking for votes, I'm a registered Republican. They went to some of my neighbors and spoke to them individually and encouraged them to vote for them. They were going to stand for the kind of things that they stood for. Many of us voted for them because we are Republicans. And now that they're on our council, they want to rip our township apart. We're involved in several lawsuits and of course, it's always the other guy's fault. But some things were mentioned in the previous meeting tonight that I'd like to bring up. If we get two inches of rain or more in an occurrence, which happened just a week or so ago and happens quite often. The Bethlehem wastewater treatment facility has permission to dump directly into the Salkin Creek and directly into the Lehigh River. I mentioned in the previous meeting, I was on the board for the Easton Fish and Game for a while. I was their representative to go to the Pennsylvania Sportsmen's Association's meetings. I'm talking 10 years ago roughly. The Fish Commission and Game Commission people would come to those meetings told us then, but because of what is being dumped into the rivers, it's sterilizing fish. They're finding fish with lesions on their bodies. Because not everything that goes through a wastewater treatment facility can be neutralized and it's ending up in our waters. As far as the water, we all have wells. And some people at some of our meetings have said, well, you know, Bethlehem came across the river there and the people that were ruined, why they? Yeah, after a lawsuit, they weren't going to admit it, but they had polluted, the landfill had polluted their wells. So I asked some of the landowners, what happened with your wells? What happened when they put in the water? Well, we had to pay for half of it, I was told, of the installation. And then after that, they have to pay for the water. For the water that they were providing for themselves before. I don't think that's right. The height of a landfill, I don't know, maybe all of you know this, maybe you don't, some do, some don't. There is no law or regulation to determine how high a landfill can go. It's determined by the gradient of the surface. Which is why they want to build the wall at the cliffs by the Lehigh where it washes out. Because by providing themselves a wider base, now they can go higher and still maintain that gradient. So this explains why Mr. Grable back here is now looking at what he's looking at. This explains why we will be seeing it as well as smelling it and all the other things that go along with it. That's, I think, all that I wrote notes here for. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate your endorsement and helping us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to address counsel? At this time? If you do, state your name and your address and you will have five minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Victoria Optov Cordero. I live in Lower Salkin Township and I'm also a spokesperson for the nonprofit organization Citizens for Responsible Development, LST. The organization basically was a grassroots organization of residents throughout the Lehigh Valley who came together because they were very, very concerned about the future of our health and safety on the Lehigh River in Lower Salkin as it presents itself to the Delaware Lehigh National Heritage Corridor, to the 9/11 Memorial Trail. And the benefits that this 275 acres of forest in Lower Salkin provide not only to the Lower Salkin residents, but also to everybody who comes into the Lehigh Valley for tourism. Everybody who uses the DNL Trail, all of the nonprofit organizations that run countless 5Ks, all of the economic tourism that occurs. Anyway, you all know I've been here before, you. And in January, this council body voted, and I think in historic way, at the time, there were eight council people here on, and you voted 8-0 to support the executive in moving forward and participating in what was called a conditional use hearing to oppose the Bethlehem landfill expansion, which is being proposed on the 275 acres. We were so thankful for your involvement and for all the work that has been done. And our coalition, which includes Northampton County, I hope I can say that, was historic in that we had so many people from all backgrounds and places. And it was one thing that our community could say together that we cared about our future, we cared about our community, we cared about the Lehigh Valley and our reputation here. And in May, the court overturned the zoning ordinance, which provided for the conditional use proceeding you participated in. Since that time, and I've updated your Energy and Environment Committee, the landfill has moved forward with trying again to have their land rezoned and to present a development plan in Lower Salkin. There are some very important changes, one of which, because of the tremendous outpouring of community opposition, they changed the zoning this time around to permit landfilling as of right. Which our municipality's planning code, the state document that governs or provides information for municipalities, does not recommend you do that. So it's time and time again, we're faced with these type of things. But I came before the Energy and Environment Committee because I was invited by Ms. Sarinski, who I thank very much for all of her efforts in following this and staying apprised and keeping the Energy and Environment Committee apprised. I came before them last month and it came before them this month, today, this earlier today. But last month, I think, was another momentous moment. And it was a moment where we could come together as a community because Ms. Sarinski recommended that we move forward with a new resolution to have Northampton County oppose the current proposal, the Bethlehem landfill proposal that's going through the township at this time. It's very important that the township or the county reassert its position in this situation. Because there have been comments and statements made at our zoning hearings that indicate that because it's a new zoning ordinance and a new new application by the landfill, that anything you did before doesn't matter anymore. Even though it was on the same 275 acres of land and addressed the same landfill.
You have a minute.
Thank you. So with your blessing, I hope that you will consider approving or voting in favor of the resolution that you are considering at this evening's meeting. I think it's another opportunity for us to all to come together from all walks of life and protect each other. And I really appreciate your time and your efforts and your very, very good questions that I've heard at both Energy and Environment Committee meetings and throughout this process. It is a long process, but united, we will win. And with your help, we will get there. And please join us again. And I hope that you will approve the resolution that's before you this evening. Again, I want to thank you all for your time. I want to thank every member here that's asked questions. And I want to thank Ms. Sarinski for her efforts in bringing this before you again tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anybody else that would like to address counsel? We'll move on. Mr. McClure, do you have a report? Sir.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I just want to, it's not part of my report that I have for you tonight, but I just want to strongly endorse the resolution that you have before you tonight. We've reviewed it and we approve of the resolution and the potential for the tools that it may put in our toolbox to help us keep the what will just be environmental degradation for the purposes of accepting New York trash from happening. So whatever we can do to help with that matter, we're greatly encouraged to do that. So I wanted to give you a report on the mail-in ballots. There were 28,895 applications made to date for a mail-in ballot. Thus far, we have received 11 overseas, let me see. 11 overseas ballots have been returned on 12 applications. 19,957 mail-ins have been, I'm sorry, 20,001 mail-ins have been returned. Five military ballots have been returned. And a total of 28,895 ballots have been returned. Or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's issued ballots returned have been, little short of that.
Wait a second, can you go over this?
Sure. Sure. Applications issued thus far. So I'll just go left to right. 28,895. Applications returned, 28,895. Ballots sent, 28,809. So that's ballots that were mailed out. Ballots returned, 9,371. Votes recorded thus far, 9,371.
So 9,371.
On 28,809 cent.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yeah, about a third. The other day, I had the opportunity to visit the U.S. Small Business Administration office that has been established in upper Mount Bethel Township, I'm sorry, lower Mount Bethel Township pursuant to the July 15th and 16th torrential downpours that we've described as biblical. And unfortunately, we did not get a presidential disaster declaration, which we had hoped for. And we did not get any individual assistance from FEMA, which we had hoped for. But we did get the Small Business Administration to come in. And what I think it's important to note is that they are leaving their upper Mount Bethel Township, I'm sorry, lower Mount Bethel Township location on August 25th. And we need everybody who has been affected by the rains of July 15th and 16th to go and fill out their application. So these are loans, right? And they're low interest loans. And they can be paid back over 30 years.
Oh, wow.
Yes, over 30 years.
So it's like free money almost.
So.
It's August 25th?
I'm sorry.
October?
I meant October 25th. Yeah, I'm sorry, October 25th. The physical damage, December 1st, 2023, that's the application deadline, December 1st, 2023. And the economic injury is July 2nd, 2024. But they're only here, the experts are only here until October 25th. So it would be imperative for anyone who is affected anywhere in the county on the July 15th and 16th, 2023 rains to get there and talk to these experts about the potential loan. The thing about the loan is even if you fill out the application, you don't have to take the loan. So if you're judged worthy of the loan, and most people will be, you have to demonstrate some income. Interestingly, the lower your ability to pay, the lower your interest rate will be. So the lower your income, as long as you make the threshold, your rate could be as low as 2.5%. The higher you go, it could be up to 5%. And the first 15,000 of it, I think I said, is unsecured. So there's no lien on the first $15,000 of it. There's money for personal property loss. You can have cars or motorcycles replaced on these loans. So I want to encourage everybody to go see the SBA. And if not, make sure by December 1st for physical damage and July 2nd, 2024 for economic injury that people apply for these loans. Last night, we had a conversation in the Finance Committee meeting about the barn that, the garage that Public Works wants to build. And what I think I need to do is apologize to counsel. Because we, and I accept full responsibility for this. We have not done a good enough job laying the predicate for you in advance of coming to you with this contract, both about the necessity for this Public Works facility and what we have done over the last six years to attempt to bring this Public Works facility to fruition in Northampton County. And I think, I mean, Brian Cop is our park superintendent. He's going to come up at this time and share with you a little bit about the reasons for the necessity of the establishment of the parks garage. Brian?
Good evening, counsel. I have some pictures to help. Thank you, Mr. County Executive McClure. What I have in front of you are pictures that are taken literally today. These are, these are pictures what our staff has been working in for at least the past 15, 20 years. The barns, and they are barns, they're original barns from dating back, I'm not even sure, hundreds of years. But these two facilities at both Gracel and Lewismore Park have become very much outdated. Our staff use these for their break rooms. Now remember, our staff are parks department, so three quarters of the year, we are out most of the time. But we also do snow maintenance. And these are the facilities that we do any type of equipment repairs in, where they have their breaks. Unfortunately, I can't say this is where they have restrooms because there are no restroom facilities in either of these buildings. We have porta potties that are adjacent or one of the buildings next to in the Gracel complex that they go to. I've been superintendent for the past five years and with the county for really 10 and a half. And in my time there, I've heard from the park staff that there's been plans, there's been issues, there's been these ongoing complications around the maintenance facilities. Luckily, 10 years ago, when Wing Group Park was first built, there was a maintenance facility added to that. That's our only one that we have a concrete floor that we can put a lift in to do any type of maintenance. Out of the rain, out of the snow, out of heat, out of cool. So really, I'd like to go through some of these pictures. What we'd be proposing at Lewismore Park as a central location is to get away from these two-story old rustic barns. One flat facility that we can stack trucks, stack equipment in, do our maintenance in. I mean, when it rains, it rains. We get snow and rain in these facilities. It drips down from the upper portion of the barn down to the lower. You can see on the first page, the two-story, two structures that we have. And I mean, as many of you have attended the local county festival at Lewismore Park, this is that first barn right when you pull into the park. That's our maintenance facility for not just that park, but DHS and most of our other regional park locations in and around Bethlehem and Easton. We house all of our equipment there. Over the past five years, we've invested almost $450,000 of heavy equipment, not our backpacks, our blowers, rakes and things like that. But this is where we store those. They don't go out to Wing Group because that's further out and all of our main parks are really in this area around Gracel and around Lewismore Park. You can see the entryway really from the bottom right picture, a small, old, probably step that was built when the barn was there. On the second page, you can design. Our facilities really are not designed for today's equipment that we've been purchasing. Our maintenance of any of those, you can see our break rooms that we have here. Really no locker space. Tools have been piled up into the underneath of these barns. The third page, you can see where we do have maintenance. The top left corner is at Lewismore Park. And if you're lucky enough not on one day to have a squirrel or a bat above you, that's your lucky day. We've had new equipment have our lines torn. They've gotten into oil drums. They've gotten into other types of plastic equipment. We're continuously replacing those small minor things that add up a lot to our budget. The top right corner is our foreman's office space. You can see IT has put a box in there, but that's right above where storage space in the upper portion of the Gracel barn is. And during winter, it does leak down through. And you can see that at that bottom right picture. They've had to put plastic in there to help the water around from the entry point to get into those locations. The new mower that we just purchased, the nice red Toro there, has to have either a tarp or a piece of cardboard on top of it because of the bats that are living in those, in that facility. And we have bat droppings that drip down daily. The next page shows our inadequate storage space. We have plows that sit outside three, most three seasons. Sun beating on them. We don't have the adequate space to put these in, store them over spring, summer, fall, and then move our winter equipment out when we do do the winter maintenance and our summer and spring fall back in. The two on the top left are Lewismore lean-to that we have $100,000 worth of two pieces of equipment at least sitting in that lean-to because we can't fit it inside the barn up top where we have our mowers. Years of exposure and limits at the bottom of that page shows the ceiling in the Gracel barn where the guys have their lunch, sometimes working 16-hour days at snow removal. This is what they come back to. The, and when I said it rains, it rains. And when it snows, it snows. You can see the light coming through that top left picture. That's at Lewismore Park. It is open to elements. The top right and the bottom right, a couple of years ago, I believe it was maybe at the beginning of my term or prior to. But they had to jack up the, and re-support the bottom beams because we had no place to go for salt that was there and it was starting to sag. Excuse me. So really, we're looking at an investment, not in a building, not in a structure, nothing that's been. that's been ten, fifteen, twenty years in the making that has been passed along. We're putting the investment into our staff. Our staff redid the retunda plantings out here. We have twenty-three hundred acres of land that we maintain and growing. We have a lot of equipment, like you, and I appreciate the, the work that you've done to approve the equipment purchases, but they're sitting outside, under the elements. And that's where I would like to show you these tonight. Mike's gonna go through any of the bid or the timeline, but I wanted to give you a, a little bit longer timeline and show the existing conditions where our park staff are located right now and the need for this new building.
Any questions? So I, I think you would be properly postured to ask, well, what have you been doing about this? Well, we've been trying for years to get this done. And before I turn it over to Mr. Emili, I'll, I'll say that this money's budgeted. We have the money in our budget. We need only to approve the contract and we can get this work done now. So Mr. Emili is going to go through the timeline to answer that very good question. What, what have you people been doing?
Yeah, so as you can tell from those pictures, it didn't take very long to, you know, assess that there was a definite need after I was appointed in twenty eighteen. The RFP for the engineering services went out February twenty nineteen. That contract for the engineering work was issued April twenty nineteen. January twenty twenty, we had the first bid opening, came in at one point two million dollars, significantly over the budget for, for that sort of structure, well over our engineer's estimate. So we decided to rebid the project. July twenty twenty was when the second bid opening was. And mind you, in an attempt to reduce the costs, we actually took one bay off of the, the size of the original garage, as well as some other small changes to try to value engineer it and get it within budget. This time, it came in just under one point two million dollars yet again. But this was without an HVAC and plumbing bid this time. So twenty twenty-one, we thought that we might have a potential solution to this with a possible land acquisition that was adjacent to Lewismore Park that already had several large pole barns and garages on it. It would have been perfect and would have eliminated this need, but unfortunately, it just, it did not work out. So we went back to trying to get this bid out a third time. May twenty twenty-two was the third bid attempt, and this time it came in one point nine six million. And again, that's without HVAC and plumbing contracts, and that is without, or with a reduced scope. So again, it's not something that I felt was worth bringing the council's attention. September twenty twenty-two, we got a negotiated price that we solicited from Wilmer R. Schultz since we already had multiple failed bid attempts. That quote came in at just under one point eight million dollars. Again, that's with no electrical, HVAC or plumbing associated with it. So this year, September, we received a proposal from Gorski Engineering through the Sourcewell contract with Blue Scope Construction. That's the contract that's before you tonight, little under two point two million dollars. And we also solicited a quote from J. Dillon Concrete, who's a subsidiary of Boyle Construction. And that came in just under two point six million dollars. So we feel that the, the proposal that we received from Blue Scope is, is very competitive. As Executive McClure stated, we have the funding available for this project right now. We'd be getting a better project, or better product overall with Blue Scope. This is a pre-engineered metal building with metal roofing as opposed to the, the original design that was just glue laminated wood columns and asphalt shingle roof. And as, as Brian explained, the, the need for this has never been greater. We haven't invested any kind of money in our, our parks' storage and maintenance buildings since Wayne Group was installed. We have very expensive equipment that's not adequately protected. And from here, if we don't approve it, it's only going to get more costly. So I, please ask for your consideration for this tonight. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Godfrey.
You said you received a price from, you say Oil Concrete?
Boyle Construction.
Boyle.
Yeah.
Was that the same time that Blue Scope, was that a open bid or were they two negotiated contracts?
They were two negotiated contracts.
Why did we not have an open bid at that time?
Well, we, that would have been the, the fifth or the, the fourth open bid attempt at that point.
How many bids did you get the other four times?
It varied depending on the bid attempt. The general construction, there was only one valid bid, the first three, yeah, the first three attempts. Electrical, we received three bids twice, one bid once. HVAC plumbing, we received two bids once and no bids the final two times we bid it.
And it's this administration stance that we're still getting a lot of bids for jobs with this current RCO structure because it seems, it seems kind of crazy that we can't get anybody to bid on two million dollar projects.
Well, we, as we stated in the presentation a couple of weeks back, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a problem that existed prior to the RCO. And I don't think that it's something that you can point at the RCO and say, this is the reason why we are not getting these bids on these projects.
I politely disagree, but thank you.
Mr. Lott.
Thank you for that presentation. So the bids were all out on a pole, let's call it a pole barn, is that correct?
Sure, yes.
And then after the third bid on the pole barn, that's when you guys started looking at these Butler buildings.
Correct.
And Butler buildings are, that is a prefab, a prefab building, but it's, it's also, they have designated contractors, correct, that are approved to put their buildings up?
Yes, they do.
So you, you kind of get locked into somebody that has an agreement with the Butler building system, correct?
Yes.
So we were very limited at that point, and that, I believe, is why you may have negotiated because there's only, I believe, a couple in the Lehigh Valley that have that agreement with Butler. So I, I just wanted to understand at what point and why you decided to do that. And, and, and the person that actually has it, Gorski, I believe they use the ABC Apprentice program for their apprentices, and they meet the RCO, correct?
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
So I'm correct.
Can I add one thing to that? Apparently Gorski didn't get the memo from the ABC not to bid to North Hampton County. Thank you. How to put it?
We didn't have anybody from the valley. Gorski's not actually from the valley, they're south of here, right?
Montgomery County.
Correct with that. Just looking at the pictures, there's definitely a need when you can see outside and you're dealing with the elements of winter, spring, so, okay. Any other questions on this, Mr. Godfrey?
Just a couple point. I, I do not dispute the need for this. This has been brought up on and off budget hearings for, for years and years. I guess my concern is that, this is the first time that I think that we've brought, been, it's been brought to this council that there've been, you know, three and four bid attempts to do this. I would have felt more comfortable if you would have presented us with it back when you had those one point two million dollars worth of it. It never came here. I mean, that was a decision that you could have brought it to us and said, you know, this is the situation, but you never did. So that's kind of why we're at this point, is because decisions were made that this council was never made aware of. And now we're in this situation where we don't have competitive bids. Now, my question is, the gentleman that was here yesterday was unable to tell us who would be doing the plumbing and the HVAC work. Do you know who would be doing the plumbing and the HVAC work? Are they local? Why was he unable to tell us that? Does he, does he have a guy? I mean, what's going on?
At that point, he just had, because what's presented to us is basically just one giant bid package. We don't have any individual contracts, everything is through Gorski. So it's, it's on them to get the contractors to, to meet their budget numbers.
But why couldn't he tell us? I mean, that, that's what, what I don't understand. I mean, what is he gonna do, make some calls? And I, it, it just, it's typically not the way that we do business. Usually, we, we have an indication as to who the contractors or the subs will be for plumbing, HVAC and electrical. Kevin, you know the answer, you can chime in.
If it's okay.
Are you done?
Yeah, well, yeah, sure.
I mean, when you have a, we bid most of the work at the county as multiple prime.
Mm-hmm. Electric. We're required to.
And we're required to. This is a case where it's a single prime. Am I correct at that?
Yes.
It's a single prime. So we have a contract with one contractor. He does everything down below. Sometimes when you have, I'm sorry, sorry about that. Sometimes when you have real small, like the plumbing on this is a toilet and a sink, and the HVAC is very small too. Sometimes it makes a lot of sense, though we can't always do it in government, to throw that in to the general contractor bid and make it a more, a, a single prime because then he can reach out to his guys that do the big work for him and say, hey, I need you to come over here and put a toilet in for me. I know it's a small job, but I work with you. And you know, John, that conversation has, has happened a lot. So that's why sometimes a, a single prime works much better when you have small subs that you, because he's got the stroke, we, he doesn't. You don't hire these small guys to put a toilet in that often. But this contractor has those relationships. So I, I would say he probably doesn't, he has a number in his head, but he probably doesn't have a contractor yet. But he's gonna go get one because it's his responsibility. I hope that helped a little bit, John.
Yeah, well, it, it explains it, but again, we're, we're at a, a situation where we don't have a competitive bidding process. And in my opinion, the competitive bid process is broken. And I think I'm troubled by the fact that this was not brought to council when we had one, well, one point two million dollar project. We probably could have worked to, to get that moved ahead.
Well, I, we just didn't feel like that was a good value at, at that point in time. I mean, it was almost double what the engineer's estimate was. It's, you know, it's for a traditional pole barn. I mean, we thought, that's why we didn't feel the need to bring it to you at that, that point in time.
Well, again, again, that was something that could have been brought to us and, and it could have been discussed. But again, I don't think council was ever made aware of it. And I'm not aware of a council member participating in, in the bid process. That usually where a, a member of council is invited. I don't remember that ever happening, and, and I wish that this would have been brought to us three years ago because it would have saved us a lot of money and we, you know, at least we had some bidding going on. Again, I, I agree it's completely necessary. It's been necessary for years. But the bid process in this county is broken, and I, I'm not going to be supporting this particular contract.
Mr. Godfrey.
One last question. When Boyle and Blue Scope bid, was it, or proposed, negotiated with you? Was that at the same time and did anything in the scope of work change at all?
No, that was at the same time, and they were, they were both given the same set of plans to, to bid on. Thank you.
Ms. Bariafina.
If we approve this contract tonight, what's your timeline for the project?
Gorski had indicated they're, they're ready to, to go on this, so we could potentially be breaking ground before the end of the year.
And how long do you anticipate the project will take to completion?
Probably six to nine months is probably reasonable.
And I have one more question, but I think it might have been answered by Mr. Lott. I, I was gonna say, could some of the parts of this been broken down to smaller contracts? But you're saying because of the scope, he said it, but I should ask you.
Well, our, that's just the way the county's procurement laws are. I mean, it has to be bid as, as separate trades, but that's where the whole, these state cooperative purchasing agreements like Sourcewell, you know, we can use that and it's all through one contractor.
That's fine.
Ms. Rinsky.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that yesterday when we questioned Mr. Gorski about the subcontractors for the plumbing, the HVAC and the electrical, that he, and I want to confirm this, that he indicated to us that the electrical had, couldn't be necessarily a local individual because it had to be a special, it was a special electrical with net metering.
Yes.
And the net metering required a specific type of electrician that he worked with to make the building, which could potentially be solar ready, as he said, right?
Yes.
And the other prices that he gave us here with the plumbing, the HVAC and the electrical, he indicated that all of those prices, regardless, that's what his budget was, but regardless of, of whether he contracted those people today or six months down the line, that's what we would pay for because that's the contracted price. I think one of the things that we have to notice is that this is one point eight million and the other bids that you had, even though they were less contextually, twenty nineteen, we all know that construction was a lot cheaper. We all saw the price of construction going up, and I think I brought this up yesterday with the Glendon Buildings, a hundred thousand dollars difference between what the cost of construction for those, that housing project was. So we know that construction costs are going up. So this price today at two point two million is, is pretty fair, given that this is gonna, this timeline is going to probably be maybe a year.
Yes, I would agree with that.
And he's gonna hold us to these prices.
Yeah, for whatever reason, he, he wasn't able to get plumbing and HVAC contractors within those budget numbers, that's, that's on him. That, that cuts into his.
Right, but he did indicate that he couldn't solicit bids for those individual contracts until he got this contract, and then that would trigger the other ones, did he not?
I don't know if he phrased it quite, quite like that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we understood the necessity of this and that this, the value of this, if we agree upon this today, is the price today. If you put it out for another bid, it could be, or another negotiation, it could be at the cost of prices escalating, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Clarification. You were saying about the electrical part. He has people who have the equipment now, that's what that was said.
Hmm, yes.
That's the difference between now and six months from now.
Right.
If we wait six months from now to get it, it's gonna cost us more. He already has what needs to be done.
Right.
That's, I want to make sure we're clear with that. That's what came across to us yesterday. And he did not have the, we were looking for local people to do the HVAC and that, and there wasn't, he hadn't even gotten to that point yet.
Right.
So, you know, I want to be clarification on that. That's all I was making a statement. Anybody else got anything to say about this? Just, just.
The notion that the prices are gonna necessarily go up is a fallacy. Steel peaked in twenty twenty-two, it's been on downward trend since then. That's the majority of this product, it's steel. So there is a good chance that it might be cheaper in six months because steel peaked and it's been downward for the last fifteen, sixteen months. That's the only thing I want to add. I think the plumbing is pretty, pretty negligible. I think it was under a hundred thousand dollars.
It is. Look on the back page of it.
And he budgeted, so like when he does what he did, he basically said, all right, what do I think it's gonna be? I gotta put enough money into the project so I can't get hurt, which is not necessarily a great thing for us because he's probably fluffed up. If you had three people give him a price and he could take the most competitive bid, but he didn't do that, he's using a budgetary number. Whenever you use a budgetary number, you make sure you don't get hurt. So it's, it's not, it's a small, that's a small portion, I'm not gonna hang up on that, but it's not great for, for us as a council body to make sure we have a good number on a project.
He stipulated pole barn. In the last year, I've been in a battle about pole buildings, and I've seen the price, what I asked for six months ago and what it is now, it's driving me absolutely insane and it's something I'm involved with outside of here. So, excuse me. I understand exactly what, what we're saying because that, any work done by that is going to be done by the people who actually have the product. So that's one thing we need to be clear with on that. Any other questions? Can we move on if not?
Thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna go back to him. Mr. McClure, back to you, sir.
Unless there are any questions for me, I'm done.
We're going to move on to old business. Public hearing on the ordinance entitled ordinance issue and a quest for proposal seeking bidders to design and implement upgrades of the audio and visual capabilities of the county council meeting room. County members who requested this be placed on an agenda have requested that it be removed at this time and for a further agenda. So we're just gonna scratch that and go on to the next thing. Everybody understand that?
So they pulled it?
It's been pulled. Do we have any other old business that council need to discuss?
Nope.
If not, we're going to go on to new business. Consideration of a collective bargaining unit arbitration award between county of North Hampton, American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees District Eighty-eight, Youth Detention Center, Unit Resolution. Ms. Bariafina, would you please introduce that resolution?
Whereas North Hampton County Charter, Section two oh two. Whereas Northampton County Charter, Section 202, Section 12 provides that the county council shall have the power to approve any collective bargaining agreements with officers and employees. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the collective bargaining unit arbitration award between county of Northampton and the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees District Council 88 Youth Detention Center Unit shall be approved on this 19th day of October, 2023.
Discussion or? Yes, Mr.
Just a quick point. I said this yesterday. I, I still believe that the starting salary is not going to be adequate to, to attract, uh, qualified candidates. But unfortunately, under this process, we have no choice but to approve this.
Anybody else? I have to agree with you with that. But we'll take what we got and we'll move from there. Can I call for a vote, please?
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Consideration of the, of resolution opposing the proposed expansion of the Lower Salkin Township landfill. Ms. Rinsky, would you please introduce this resolution?
Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Northampton County Council hereby authorizes the county executive to take all necessary steps to intervene in the conditional use hearing regarding the Phase Five expansion of the Bethlehem landfill and to seek party status in the land use appeal. And whereas pursuant to Resolution Number 18 dash 2023, by and through the office of the solicitor, the county sought and obtained party status in the conditional use hearing. And whereas since the adoption of Resolution 18 dash 2023, the Lower Salkin Township Ordinance Amendment, Ordinance Number 2022 dash 02, which has rezoned, uh, the landfill expansion parcels from residential agricultural RA to light industrial LA, to allow landfills and waste disposal facilities by conditional use was invalidated by the Order of the Court of Common Pleas of Northampton County by order issued on May 8th, 2023 at docket number C dash 48 dash 2023 dash 00335. And whereas on August 30th, 2023, Lower Salkin Township enacted another zoning ordinance amendment, Ordinance Number 2023 dash five containing provisions similar to those in the invalidated ordinance 2022 dash 02, but allowing landfills and waste disposal facilities as a used permit by right rather than a conditional use. And whereas in July, 2023, the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission determined that the then proposed ordinance number 2023 dash five does not align with the intent of the future LV, the regional plan to protect the health, safety and welfare of the public, future LV policy 3.2 and its natural resource mitigation alternative does not protect high priority natural lands, future LV policy 3.1. And whereas ordinance number 2023 dash five deprives the public and the county of Northampton of the right to participate in a public hearing on the proposed Bethlehem landfill expansion and obviates the conditional use proceeding in which the county had been granted party status. And whereas on August 30th, 2023, Lower Salkin Township also acted to replace and obviate scenic and, and conservation easements granted to it in 1994 on the landfill expansion parcels that had prohibited landfill activities on the forested parcels, which include land of high preservation priority features of the national resource plan established by the LVPC. And whereas these scenic and conservation easements and restrictions established therein have been expressly designed for the purposes of ensuring the preservation of the Delaware and Lehigh Canal National Heritage Corridor and State Heritage Park and during such operation of the landfill to as great a degree as possible to preserve the original character and scenic nature of the land. And whereas the county of Northampton has interest in the preservation of the Delaware and Lehigh Canal National Heritage Corridor. Whereas the county of Northampton has provided open space funding for Lower Salkin Township's acquisition of the Woodland Hills Preserve, renamed on or about August 16th, 2023 as a Sandra Yerga Community Recreation Area and Nature Preserve with walking trails and other recreational uses located less than one mile from the parcels proposed for the landfill expansion. And whereas the enlargement of the Bethlehem landfill, its potential future waste disposal area elevations and the future decades-long landfill operations in the expansion area in such close proximity to the nature preserve acquired in part with county open space funds threatens to adversely impact this nature preserve and recreation area and diminish its value. And whereas the Northampton County Council expresses concerns about the potential impact of the landfill expansion of water resources in the immediate vicinity of the proposed expla, expansion, including the Lehigh River, the Bull Run Creek Natural Area, a designated natural area in the natural areas inventory of Lehigh and Northampton Counties, Pennsylvania update 2005, and wetlands situated on the proposed expansion site. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council reaffirms the finding set forth in its resolution number 18 point dash 2023. Whereas Northampton County Council believes the landfill expansion is not in the best interests of Northampton County and contrary to its stated goals of preservation of open space, farmland preservation and the preservation of environmentally sensitive lands and green spaces within the county. Two, the Northampton County Council hereby authorizes the county executive to take all necessary steps to apprise other governmental agencies and officials who have power to take official action relating to the proposed landfill expansion of this resolution. Three, further, the Northampton County Executive through the office of the solicitors is, is authorized to take any and all steps necessary and to the extent authorized by applicable law relating to the proposed expansion of the landfill to protect and preserve the county's interest in the scenic, natural and conservation values of the Delaware and Lehigh Canal National Heritage Corridor and State Heritage Park as reflected in the 1994 scenic and conservation easements and is to preserve the original character and scenic nature of the land and public natural resources. So we did discuss this in the Energy, Environment and Land Use Committee hearing. We heard from Victoria and several of the other individuals from Lower Salkin Township and also Bethlehem Township. I feel very strongly that we should affirm our resolve to support and our commitment to support them in their struggles for every single reason that, uh, was listed in this resolution. The natural scenic beauty of the land, the quality of the water, the quality of life and for the people and the residents that have expressed their interests to us. I will be definitely voting for this. Thank you.
Discussion from other members of council? Mr. Gofredo.
I just feel like I need to give an explanation because although, you know, the last time everybody came in here, uh, I got a big round of applause because I voted in favor of it, which felt great at the time. I felt hypocritical in the moment. Um, although I, I, everybody that came and spoke, uh, I feel for you. And I've said it before, I'm in a similar situation where I live, but it doesn't change the fact that, you know, even though this is going to absolutely pass this table here, um, you have a bigger fight ahead of you. But if you do get your way, and I hope that you do for your sake, it doesn't help anybody else in the county. If anything, it hurts. And Bethlehem is the largest populated area in the county. And now you're going to take away one of the three places where we put all of our garbage. And we all make it. And then my people that live where I live are going to ask, what are we going to do? So, um, good luck. I wish you the best, but I'm not going to be able to support this.
Mr. Giovanni.
Uh, my, uh, comments are the same as Mr. Gofredo. I can't, uh, support this neither because of what's going to happen. We support this. The next one will be for, uh, waste management, dirt landfill. They'll be coming down here and saying, hey, you resupplied them. Now you need to support us. And council is not a body that determines zoning. That's a municipality, I think. We shouldn't be involved in that. And for that reason, I am not supporting also.
Anyone else? Mr. Kuzik.
I'd like to say, I, I, I agree that it's none of our business to, uh, comment on bad zoning. Um, that, that exists everywhere. Uh, but I think where we do have, have a stake is the conservation easement. And I think that's important because the, the county has conservation easements. And we've put conservation easements on, on a lot of properties. Um, so I, I, I think if this conservation easement falls, uh, that there's a potential for, for other ones, too. Um, the, the zoning change is, is ridiculous. But, uh, you know, that's none of our business. Um, but the conservation easement and the protection of it is. So I'll be supporting this.
Before I go back to Ms. Rinsky, because I know she's waiting.
Well, I, I have a rebuttal.
I'm just in shock they named the park after not Priscilla de Leon. But, you know. Shows you what happens when I'm sitting up here and not sitting at home like that. So, but, you know. You know. Yeah, I, that's the, I was like, you know, we're going to read the whole thing. And I heard that and went, what? Does that person vote?
Sandra, yeah.
With you or against you?
The night that, that passed, she abstained.
Okay. Um, no, not for the name of the park, but on the other matters. Does she, is she voting with you or against you on these matters?
Okay.
Significant situation.
Okay, well, I.
All right, we, we've got to control it back.
Can I, can I? Can I? Thank you. I know, I just, I, I would, but look, I agree with my colleagues, but I also agree with, I, I don't need to hear all that stuff that you read to know that it's the right thing to do. Like right now, it's just the right thing to do. And you know what? If our colleagues up north came down, I think it's an area where we don't have any authority in zoning. But we haven't talked about waste management for a very, very long time. So if this is sort of the test case, then I want the county to be involved. And, and I think that we should be. So I will be supporting this. I mean, again, it's nothing because there's no teeth. We can't compel anybody to do anything, but.
Before I go to you.
It's just crappy, period. It's been crappy since it started.
Before I go to you, I'm, I, I want to refer something to, uh, Mr. Spadone, our solicitor.
This is a resolution.
Yes.
And the Home Rule Charter reads as follows. The vote of a majority of the members shall be required for the adoption of an ordinance resolution or budget unless otherwise provided by this charter. So I'm, I'm opining that you're going to need five. Not the, not the quorum because we have two people that are not here.
Right, five. That's what I'm trying to do with my rebuttal.
Okay, you can.
Just so we're clear, thank you.
Go ahead.
I got you. I knew. Okay, I'm good?
Yes.
So I just want to state that this is a reaffirmation of something we already did before. And that one of the reasons why we did it before was so that we would be able to seek party status. And I just want to reiterate that that is not just showing support for Lower Salkin Township. That is saying that our county has a seat at the table when decisions are being made. Ms. Optov Codaro stated that in the previous meeting, that they said that everything happened before this new zoning was basically nullified. So the party status that we had, if I'm correct, and I would ask you to allow Ms. Victoria Optov-Coder to just confirm that, if you could. My concern is that if that party status is nullified, that we have to go back and ask for party status again. And this resolution would give Mr. McClure and the solicitor the authority and the consent of council to do so. So that's what we're really asking for here. Not, do you agree with the landfill? Do you agree with the expansion? Do you not agree with the expansion? Are you for recycling? Are, it's not about that. It's about, do we want a seat at the table? And so I think that's the more important question. And you can take that back to the people that you represent because I'm sure that you would want our county to have a seat at the table if and when that landfill up there expands as well. Because you're talking about waste management. And I know that this is an important thing to your constituents in that region. I do understand that landfill provides lots of jobs and that it is, uh, something that does goodwill to your community. At the same time, I would think that you would want representation to be at that table in regards to how something is expanded, what conditions are being, uh, used, what, like, what's the process? And the, so I think, again, that is the more important concern here.
Are you done?
I am.
Mr. Giovanni.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I understand I'm verbose sometimes.
Mr. Giovanni.
I understand to get the county exec involved in standing. But as the new business reads, the consideration of the resolution opposing the proposed expansion of the Lower Salkin Township, uh, landfill. Again, that's how it read on the agenda. That's how it was put out to the public. And that's where I'm voting against.
Okay. I think we're clear on that. Anybody else have anything on it? I, I respect everybody's opinion on this and where you're coming from. And I can understand where you're sitting at and what you have to deal with. Because you've got to worry about the people that you live with.
Mm-hmm.
So with that said, before, uh, I'll give it to you. And then I'm going to go call for a vote.
Uh, I, I'd just like to state, you know, I understand how, first of all, very easy to do. Very easy to say I'm in favor of this. It's not easy to say I'm not. But when we vote yes and this gets in favor, the ramifications are simple. One less landfill. We then drive trucks with diesel engines further west or further north, create more pollution, then more people come in and say, hey, there's too many trucks on the highway. There's too much this, there's too much that. We can't right all the wrongs. The world is a messy place. We make garbage. We have landfills. We close a landfill, it's going to be more expensive just to live, just to throw things away, to buy things, to have things, to truck them away. So yes, I'm very sympathetic to all the people in the room. But I'm not going to pretend that we're going to be able to fix the world with this resolution. We're still going to have more problems that are going to be created by this. And I don't need to be explained what I'm voting on. I find that insulting. I know what I'm voting on. I've thought about this very, very thoroughly. And yes, I'm going to make the harder decision to look all these people in the face that came here. And I'm going to have to say, no, I don't support you. And I'm, I do support your efforts. I hope you all work out. But morally, I'm not going to be a hypocrite to myself and say, hey, I did the right thing. Because I don't think I'm doing the right thing. I think I'm doing the easy thing if I vote for it.
With that, I'll call for a vote.
Ms. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
No.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
No.
Adopted by a vote of five to two.
Okay. Hard decision for you guys. Consideration of Administrative Code, Article 13 Contract Resolution, Hitler Electric Blue Scope Construction Incorporated, Penn Dot. Mr. Heckman's not here. So Ms. Varghese, I'm going to ask you to read this for me, please. The three. I, I got a frog in my throat. It's not working. Out of nowhere.
I apologize, folks.
Whereas on September 25th, 2023, the Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution increasing the contract amount by $1,883.89 for a total amount of $36,708.68. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve the additional contract amount as indicated. This was discussed yesterday at Finance. And this is the third, am I correct? Third? One, two, three.
Mm-hmm, this is the first one.
Third change.
Yes. Discussion, council? None? Call for the vote, please. Hold a second. Go ahead, Mr. Gofredo. Hold a second, go ahead, Mr. Gofredo.
I'm just gonna state why I won't be supporting this. We have a local contractors ordinance, and we have a responsible contractors ordinance with the purpose of making sure we have responsible contractors and local contractors. Not only is the one contractor that we have headquartered in Missouri, the other two sub-primes, we don't know, so to state that. This is, oh, I'm sorry.
These are all individuals.
Save that speech for the next one.
Sorry.
You're one step ahead.
My bad, I have the wrong words.
This is just upgrading the electric.
And it's the blow, it's the blow thing, what's the thing?
The blow down of the boiler.
A blow down thing.
No opposition.
No opposition, okay, let's call for a vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Okay.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Now we'll do Blue Scope Construction, Ms. Vargo Hefner. This is terrible.
Whereas on October 13th, 2023, Northampton County Council received a request from county executive for county council to adopt a resolution approving a contract in the amount of $2,199,180 with Blue Scope Construction, Inc., for a new parks maintenance building at Louise Moore Park. Now therefore be it resolved, Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth as in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Blue Scope Construction, Inc. Again, was discussed yesterday and again tonight.
Okay, Mr. Gofredo.
Same thing. We're not getting enough bids, and for us to say that we know we have a responsible price here is, it's wrong. And I'm sure there'll be an argument to state that, yes, of course, it meets our budget, it's already allotted. But we're not getting local bidders. We're not getting enough bidders, and we keep talking about it, and yet nothing gets done, so I won't support it.
Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Zirinsky?
I just, I understand that there is a discussion that the local ordinance seems to butt up against the RCO, and that there's an argument that consistently is heard that we're not getting enough bids. But the fact remains that we need projects to get accomplished in the county. You yourself, Mr. Gofredo, just said that we gotta make some tough decisions. This company isn't from Missouri. It's from Collegeville. Now remember, the parent company that sources the contracts is in Missouri, but they bid the contract out to somebody in Pennsylvania. Now that is a unique outfitter for this specific pole barn. And I think Mr. Cope was already up here explaining how our equipment that we previously purchased, that is now sitting outside season after season, succumbing to the elements, and not only that, to the critters that are chewing on the wires and everything else, and then they have to worry about backdropings, which I'm sure is not healthy, on the equipment that they use. I think that the urgency and the need for this and the budget needs to somehow supersede this argument that we need to overhaul the bidding process, and we're not gonna do anything until that bidding process gets addressed. To me, that kind of obstruction is not productive for the citizens of the county and what we need to perform in the county.
Wow.
I'm gonna support it.
Go ahead, Mr. Gofredo, please.
I'm seeing the pictures, and yeah, it's definitely not ideal, but I would say it's definitely a priority we should get done. But to put spending millions of dollars with no basis or no actual relative idea of what these things should cost, that's irresponsible fiscally. I don't think having a tractor outside is a huge heartache for the taxpayers, but I do think spending millions of dollars without having any competitive bidding process is. So I'm still not gonna support it.
Anybody else? Mr. Lot?
This company has been vetted by the Pennsylvania.
State bid.
So it's not, there hasn't been, you know, this bid, this has been established, the state established this. And back to the facility, I mean, I don't know how many people remember, but it wasn't that long ago that we had an incident at this building, and we lost a lot of equipment at this building. I mean, so there's not only safety issues, there's not only condition issues, but there's also security issues at this thing. I mean, we store, you heard it, quite a bit of expensive stuff, and we've already went through this one time, getting broken and robbed. So anyway, this is, this, 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 this Blue Scope with the Butler Building came from the state. This isn't, and that's the only way we were allowed to get around that multiple prime. So to say this hasn't been vetted, it's been extremely vetted. In fact, it's been going on for four years in our county, and the state vetted these people. And we're using somebody that this state vetted. So I don't understand really, and they meet the RCO. You can't really tell what the resident, and that was always the problem with the residency clauses, you can't tell what the residency is on your job until the job starts. And that was always an issue, and I used to deal with that. I mean, you had to actually go on a job, and say, oh geez, he's got 10 guys from, you know, Texas and four guys from here. It doesn't work, you know? But that is an after fact. That's how you count heads, who's from where. They can, so the most important thing is it does fit the RCO. That's what we have been thinking. It's been vetted by the state, I really don't, the necessity, I don't think anybody's here saying is not the necessity. So I'm certainly gonna support this, thank you.
Mr. Kuzik.
Sorry, I didn't have my mic on, I hope I spoke loud enough.
I think you, God, I think you.
Mr. Kuzik.
Again, I don't dispute the urgency and the need for this project, and it hasn't changed way back since 2020, when the first competitive bids did come in. Unfortunately, at that time, this administration chose not to bring it up. The thing hasn't changed, it's been that way since 2020. Maybe it's gotten a little bit worse, but it's always been that way. Now, in other forms of government, you open up the bids and you can reject them all. Unfortunately, in the one that we have, the administration makes a decision whether or not to present it to council. I believe they should have presented it to council at that time, at that 1.2 million with competitive bids. I might have considered voting for it. But, you know, here we are, three years later, and we do not have competitive bids. And I agree that this company can do the work. I have no doubt. But I am troubled whether or not there'll be local labor, and the fact that, I can't believe this is so specialized that Wing Gap Electric cannot do the work. They've done almost, or have been able to do almost everything that we have asked of them. So that sent up a red flag. And the other thing is, ultimately, this is a garage. I mean, we have 38 municipalities that have public works facilities, and they've all managed to bid them out and get them done. Maybe not recently, but, you know, I know my township did it in the not-too-distant past, so it can be done. So I'll be voting no. But I do, I do feel for you, Brian, but you should have brought this up in 2020. I would have supported, and we would have found money in the budget. Unfortunately, the administration didn't bring it to council's attention, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Go ahead, go ahead. You ready?
Yeah, I think I am, I'm just trying to find my little notes.
Because Ms. Giovanni's got his finger up.
Oh, well, let him go first, and I'll find my notes then.
Go ahead, Ms. Giovanni.
Well, I'm agreeable with Mr. Lot about the state vetted this company.
Absolutely.
I was in business myself in an IT consulting company, and I was a member of Coldstar, so the state of PA. And there's a lot of times I won municipality bids that were over $10,000 because I was a Coldstar vendor. So I will support this because it has been vetted by the state, and I don't have any problem with that.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
My concern is similar to Mr. Kuzik's, is that why wasn't this brought up before? And I hear what they're saying, like, oh, it's urgent now, but this has been started since February 2019, and it's almost doubled in price. I understand it's a different kind of building. So I'm leaning toward voting no, but I'm wondering if, my other hesitation is the gentleman also couldn't identify who he would use. Now, I'm willing to consider if we could wait two weeks and give him a chance to kind of consider who else he might use and let him come back and present, because this isn't, this is a negotiated bid, correct? And so he didn't know how to answer us yesterday. So if we table it, and give him some time to determine if he could use some other local folks, then I might be more compelled to vote yes. I don't know.
Is that a motion? Because before we.
I would let everybody weigh in before I make a motion, because sometimes we.
Thank you. I guess, you know, sometimes I don't get the chance to weigh in because we table stuff.
No, I'm not gonna do that.
What I don't like is sometimes we attack each other up here with statements like obstructionist, that's BS. They were completely vetted by the state, and I have to agree with Kevin, and I happen to agree with Tom, because I've done that. But there also, we have to look at this company as something like, if you wanted to look at the generator, the Generac scenario, they have people who actually come in and do it, but are not from here. If you want to put something like that in your home. That I know about, because I'm doing it. We need to understand sometimes, when we look at what we look at, yes, this started in 19. And yes, we should have been brought to us in 20, but it wasn't. Called, made by the administration. We may not always agree, but it's prerogative, that's what they're allowed to do. My issue with this, and that's not an issue. I've seen guys work in situations like this, and it's terrible. This is Northampton County. We're here to protect the taxpayers and the people that work for us. That will always be my priority. I will be voting for this, because I don't want anybody out there working in these kind of damn elements. It's 32 degrees, and the wind's blowing like hell. It's blowing right through those boards. These guys have no protection. What are we thinking about? Would you want to work like that? I sure as hell don't want to, I will be backing this. If there's no other discussion, can we have a vote?
I'd like to motion to table.
Is there a second on motion to table?
Second.
It's closed down with no more discussion?
No, you have to vote.
A discussion about? A motion is out, it's been seconded. We need to take a vote on table on this.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
No.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
No.
Mr. Myers?
No.
Fails by, I mean, passes, passes by a vote of five to two.
Okay. One more second.
Four to three.
Four to three.
Four to three.
So it can't pass.
There's seven of us, there's seven of us here today. I voted no, Kevin voted no. I mean, we voted yes, sorry, and.
No, you voted no to table.
Yes.
Carrie, how did you vote?
I voted no to table.
Yes.
Oh, you voted no.
We voted no, yes.
Motion fails to table.
It fails, but it was still three.
Sorry about that.
The motion table, four to three.
Because you needed five. You need five.
Now he needs five.
Let me repeat.
We need a quorum.
Thank you.
Carrie, I'd like to wait.
While you were talking, I was researching. I would rely on Section 601 of the Home Rule Charter. For the adoption of a resolution, you need a majority of the members. Now, just so you're clear, you need a majority of the quorum only for a motion.
Right.
So if four to three would pass for a motion, this was a resolution.
No, it was a table. Motion to table, motion to table.
If it's four to three, if it's a motion.
Okay, motion to table.
So it passed.
Passes. Got it.
Four to three.
So it's tabled.
It's tabled.
Thank you.
Okay. Will we get another bite at the apple?
It can be brought into, it can be added, then, correct? All right, we're gonna move on.
The procedure would be to take it off the table.
Yes. All right, PennDOT, Lori. Please, before this brawl gets back.
Whereas on October 4th, 2023, Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the contract with PennDOT to increase total expenditure to $5,335,276.21, of which 80% is federally funded. I'm not gonna read, and 20% is county-funded to fund final engineering, right-of-way acquisition, and utility relocation work on the famous Bridge Number 15. Meadows Bridge. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve the contract amendment.
Discussion. We are talking about the Meadows, I don't know about this. I see hands going up, like they're all excited in the crowd.
It's their bridge.
I know, and I don't know if we wanted to go this route, okay. Discussion from council.
Where's the confounded bridge?
Let's vote on this. It's an increase. Correct, Mr. Amelie, to make sure we get it covered. Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Are there any other new businesses we need to discuss?
No.
With that said, we're gonna go to council committee reports. Ms. Zirinsky, I know you had a meeting today?
Sure did. We had an Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee where we discussed the proposed resolution to support and reaffirm our participation in the landfill issue with Lower Salkin Township. That was pretty much all we discussed at that meeting, and so, thank you.
I had a question, that's all. Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yesterday, there was a Finance Committee meeting, fruits of our labor were completed here today. And today, we had a Human Services Committee meeting where we met with Children and Youth Director Maria Torres and Sue Wondolowski and discussed the children, youth, and families process. It was very good discussion, I would watch the tape if you want to know what's happening here. And I think, other than, you know, the commitment they have to the work, they did also briefly touch on the hiring process now that it's changed. And that was also interesting, so stay tuned.
Anybody else have a report? Ladies and reports. Yes, Ms. Zirinsky?
So I did attend the Upper Mount Bethel broadband meeting on 10/17. We did also receive a presentation by Mr. Howard, and I would say that the presentation was very similar to the one presented at council, this World's First Fiber, wireless fiber, and also the application, but was for Upper Mount Bethel. In the meeting here, we received the one for Northampton County. I also attended the Wildlands Conservancy Board Meeting. We discussed things going on in the Finance Committee. We discussed the strategic plan that's being formatted for five years and the budgeting expectations for 2024, as well as some prospective donor outreach and new members that will be joining the board in 2024. I did preliminarily reaffirm my position on their board pending whatever else happens. I also attended Lehigh Valley Planning Commission Environmental Climate Pollution Reduction Seminar that they're holding, the Climate Priority Action Plan, I guess is what we're talking about. And it went over a timeline between 2024 and 2050 about adopting region-wide climate action plans, monitoring system policies, decarbonization, and we're trying to figure out who's gonna be involved, what we have to monitor, who are our partners, how is this going to integrate with transportation priority pieces, including the Justice 40 Walk Works Program and the Vision Zero Policy, and the climate and energy goals. The next meeting for that is November 15th at 11:00 a.m., and anybody is open for that discussion. I also attended the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission Executive Committee meeting, and we discussed mainly the new budget for next year and the movement to the new space that they are trying to retrofit. It does look like it is going to be a couple million dollars to retrofit an office space so that we can have the audiovisual, which I was really interested in, you know, we talked about that a lot, security and other furniture and all sorts of other things that we talked about there. And so, yeah. It was an eventful week, what can I say?
Mr. Kuzik.
I had one, the last CCAP monthly update, a statement was put out opposing moving next year's primary, because at this point, the logistics of doing. because at this point, the logistics of doing it are virtually impossible. Now, unfortunately, a vote was taken earlier this week where two of our state legislators again voted to move the primary. So if you see any of our state legislators, tell them no, it's too late. We even heard from our election director a couple weeks ago indicating that at this point, you know, yeah, it's, it can't, logistically, it just can, can no longer be done. So again, state senators, state reps, we're stuck with April of next year, wherever it's currently set. Please, don't, don't continue to play around with it.
County Clerk.
Wednesday, October 25th, Department of Community and Economic Development Budget Hearing at 4:30, bring your books.
Mrs. Feliciter. Before we go, sad news, Phillies lost two to one. Game is over. They lost in the bottom of the ninth. With that said, motion to adjourn.
Motion.